Okay. All right. Ladies and gentlemen, I'll call the meeting to order. November the 2nd. And we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Vice Mayor Barbara McRae.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first item of business is adoption of the agenda for tonight. And Madam Manager, I think we have two to add to this. Is that correct?
We're going to do that at announcements.
Yes.
If we mamish marriage around the announcements, if we could add, that'd be great.
Yeah, you just want to add a couple of things to the announcements. That's fine. All right, everybody okay with the agenda for tonight? Anybody have any changes? If not, I'll have a motion to accept the agenda as presented.
It's a move.
Second? All in favor? And the next item is the approval of the consent agenda for tonight. Everybody had a chance to look at the consent agenda, there's an approval of the minutes and budget amendments, all that we've got. Have a motion on the floor? Second?
I second.
Second? All in favor? All right, and on the public comment session, Ms. Taylor, Gwen Taylor, Streets of Franklin. Welcome.
Thank you. I just wanted to give you an update from this past Saturday, just to give you a thank you for the hometown spirit of fall. We estimated that we had about 3,000 children that came out and walked safely. We was giving out candy. We had a lot of parents that were very thankful because they had young children that were not going to go to Bidwell or take them out, but they were small children. We had people that decorated their masks. So I just want to say thank you. Thank you to our town employees, the Sheriff's Department, they were out walking around, and it was safe and everyone was having a good time. So I just wanted to express on behalf of the merchants, we appreciate it.
Welcome. Chief Harold.
Hope you don't mind if I'm going to remove this mask so it can be heard. I want to take this opportunity to introduce some newfound friends of mine and I know longstanding friends of the community in the town of Franklin. And I'm going to ask them if they don't mind to step on up, and that's Mr. and Ms. Schiffman.
Can I take off my mask?
If you don't mind, I'll have to step right over here because that way we're facing everyone instead of having our back to anyone.
I take it.
Sure, absolutely.
Just saying please see where we really are.
First time I got to meet Mr. and Ms. Schiffman, their son contacted me not long after I'd been appointed your new chief. And he said, "Chief," he said, "I'd like to do something to honor my father for his birthday." He said, "I want to feed your team." So they took the opportunity and they got our orders in, and that's how they celebrated his father's birthday, was to feed our department. And so that immediately sent a message to me that these are really, really good people, and I look forward to getting to know them better and fostering our friendship. And so after that night, then we got to speak again. They introduced themselves to me personally, and they said, "Chief," said, "We know you don't know us, but you know, we are staunch supporters of public safety, and you know, we look forward to helping the police department any way we can. How can we do that?" And I kind of thought for a little while, and it didn't take me too long because they didn't let me think for very long about it. And they said, "We're serious about this," and they absolutely were and have been, and it's been a blessing. And so because of Mr. and Ms. Schiffman, we have reignited our K-9 unit program with the Franklin Police Department. And they, you know, again, made every meeting possible to get our first K-9 Toro, who is not able to be with us tonight, but you know, he is now here in Franklin, and he's going through his training. He's going through his training with our handler, which is the first part of the process. And so we look forward to the successes that that will bring. But the last K-9 that we had was actually over 11 years ago, and Officer Matt Pellicero was our K-9 handler back then, and he's here tonight. Because they have fostered a friendship for many, many years with the Schiffmans as well, and I know they've done a lot for the police department in the town of Franklin. So we applaud that and thank them for that. And I want to take the opportunity to actually read them a letter in appreciation for everything they've done. And this appreciation letter says, "Dear Mr. and Ms. Schiffman, please accept our heartfelt thank you for your support and credibly generous donation to financial means for the re-earther of the K-9 unit for the Franklin Police Department. Your selfless act will certainly provide safety and a better quality of life for our community that is immeasurable but shouldn't go unnoticed. We are anxious for the success and growth of this much needed safety and crime fighting resource that we hope to affirm and sustain for our department and especially the town of Franklin. Your humble generosity and personal commitment was incredibly helpful to the department, the town of Franklin, and potentially geographies unknown. Thank you again for your family's generosity and unwavering support of the Franklin Police Department. Sincerely, Chief Pillar, here of Town of Franklin Police."
Nice. Thank you.
Thank you.
It takes the community, it takes all everybody's support.
Furthermore, that's not all.
Did you even publish your clarion?
Furthermore, with acts such as you have displayed, you will now receive the certificate of commendation that is given very rarely to civilians. But it states, "This certificate of commendation acknowledges that the Schiffman family has unselfishly demonstrated the characteristic of others above self to support and donate the means for the rebirth of the Franklin Police Department K-9 unit." Chief Pillar.
Nice, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very nice.
Mayor, if the town or council would like to say anything at this time, I'll step out.
Well, of course, we are very proud, and we're proud of you, and we're proud for you, both of you.
Thank you.
And thank you so much. This means an awful lot to the department and to the town.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We, just a quick word for us.
Certainly.
Gabby and I came to this town 17, 18 years ago. We fell in love as soon as we got here, what's not to love about this place? When we decided to make it our final home, we believe very strongly, my wife and I, in supporting our community. And we're huge staunch supporters of our first responders. What they do for us, we all just take it for granted. And I talked today about defunding and all of this other nonsense. Forgive me, I'm going to say something else. We think it's a bunch of nonsense. We think that they're all heroes, and they need to be recognized for what they do. And we are going to support this town because this is our town. We're going to leave it better than we found it. That's our mission. And if by doing what we do makes this town better, then it fulfills our heart with joy and happiness to be able to do that, because we're members of this community. We may not have been born here, but we are absolutely members of this community, and this is where we'll stay till our last day. Thank you all for allowing us this time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schiff. Elaine Eisenbaum. Elaine, where are you? There you are. I can't tell where anybody is, all you masked people.
I'm behind a green mask.
All right, Elaine is the Executive Director of the N'Kwasi Initiative, and we're glad to have you with us tonight.
And I'm glad to be here. And let's see if I can pull up a couple of slides. I probably don't need to, you've all seen the kiosk, I hope. And I'll pull my mask to the side, too. So I've been here for just a few months, not 17 or 18 years, as we just heard, our lifetime, as many of you have been. It's a very lasting honor, I think. Sorry, just a second. No. About the 2020 update? That's it. Thank you. As someone who knows how I file, I don't. So, and in that time, I've had the great pleasure, I spoke to you once before, of meeting so many wonderful people, all of you amongst those, and feel that there's a lot of support. And I know the history of what went into N'Kwasi Initiative, and it wasn't easy. I just waltzed in at the easy part, so that makes my life a little bit easier. But I just came by to, let's see how we put it this way. Just over there. Okay, space. Yeah. Thank you. So the biggest thing is thank you, because what we're doing, we couldn't do without you. Particularly Mayor Scott has come out and visited with me at the kiosk a few times and shared his enthusiasm, and also shared his willingness to help out going forward. And I think, I hope he speaks for all of you. So for anyone who didn't get to see the construction as it was going on, so these are just a few snippets, and I know it's hard to see, but the first crew that came in was the foundation crew, and they poured the concrete, as you see in the second photo. And then the fun was, of course, when the crane came along and placed the footings. And you can see, the two crews didn't mesh quite perfectly, so you can see in the lower left picture that they had to recut the holes on the posts because they didn't quite line up. So it took a little jiggering, but they got it. They got the signs up. And then the last step was the landscaping, and that's the last two photos. And there's a finished, almost finished product. We still have a couple of rocks to put on the base. And I was trying to talk with the man today about getting that done. But I don't need to tell you guys, this is step one of what will be an enormous boon to Franklin, Macon County, and the entire region. And it looks great. So thanks for giving us a license to the land, and thanks for being supportive and for allowing this to happen. So everybody's always asking me, "What's the future of that site?" And I use the words N'kwashi and N'Kwasi interchangeably, so if you see one or the other. I apologize on the one hand for the discrepancy, but I'm also really proud to try and share the actual Cherokee pronunciation because they've asked me to. So what is the future? And if you look at the middle image there, that's a rendering done by Stuart, who has done other work here with you guys, of what the grounds could look like when it's a green space and when it's a gateway to Franklin. The lower right is from your very own planning document, and I just threw it in there because you guys did such a great job of that, and it's a beautiful, beautiful rendering of how the green can just be brought to life in that area. The two, the upper right and the lower left, I threw in as examples. Those are actually from Austin, Texas, in a place where they have a similar property. It doesn't have a mound or anything. But they wanted to encourage the natural environment in an urban area, and that's kind of what we're going to end up doing. And they did it through foodways and teaching people that they can grow their own food in their urban places and have a healthy lifestyle. And I think it might be a nice model for us going forward. And then, of course, the upper left is the maquette for the Women's History statue that hopefully, I'm helping a little bit, but they're undertaking the heavy lifting to make sure that we have art mixed in with that. So if we have art and food and healthy living and cultural heritage history, I think that makes a pretty impressive package to share with the world. So we did a survey. We're in the middle of doing strategic planning, and I just wanted to share some of that with you. We got 142 responses, which kind of blows my mind. I was going to be excited if we got 50. People are really interested in what we're doing, and they wanted to share their feelings. And the vast majority were really positive. And as it says up there, 31% of the people that responded had no prior knowledge of N'Kwasi Initiative. And so that means we got, what's that, probably close to 50 people that we reached that are now going to be supportive of what's going on in that space, or at least be aware of it. So almost everyone believes that history, heritage, and culture are very important to our community, and I think everyone in this room would agree with that statement. And I think that's sort of the foundation and the stepping stone to getting a lot of work done. 99% want to learn more about the heritage and the culture of this area. That's enormous. It actually took me by surprise. I didn't expect that everybody would want to say, "I want to learn something. Please educate me." And I think that's important for Franklin to know and for N'Kwasi Initiative to know also. We got a lot of respondents from Eastern Bend and Cherokee Indians, 79%. And that also was a surprise to me. I didn't expect to get that many there. They obviously still have a real interest in the mound and the area around it in particular, but they talked about other places that they'd like to see preserved, and they would like to work with the county and the town and the community to take care of those places. So a lot to learn there. Most of the people that responded were middle-aged. Important sites, the top ones mentioned were N'Kwasi Mound, Kadua, Museum of the Cherokee, and the Trail of Tears, which of course also plays a role in the town and hopefully will someday get identified here as part of the National Trail of Tears. And we're working hard on that, too. And Barbara is, of course, an endless advocate of that. Common topics that they want to learn more about is the history of the area, the Cherokee people, the mounds, culture, and people in general. You guys have such a rich history here, and I think it's fantastic that people feel there's so much more to learn. And what they want N'Kwasi Initiative to achieve in the future is develop the mound area, protect lands, educate people, and get our map finished, which you'll see in a minute, too. The map, by the way, I'll jump to that, is on the right-hand side. It's still in draft form. It's going to be a map that's available at the kiosk so that people coming into Franklin can know what other sites are available. And it's laid out in kind of an unusual way. Doesn't have everything right on the map, but it has stars where the highlight communities are. And then on the right, each community has a list of sites. So that corridor that's shown on the map is our key or our nucleus of projects. And the next one, that's a really big one, is the kiosk up in Cherokee. I've run into a little bit of a delay on that one in the translation from English to the Cherokee syllabary, but I think we've got it figured out, so that one will get done soon. So how does that affect the town of Franklin? Well, the way it does is because the people who travel from here to there are going to equate the two or at least take an interest in both. And one, people might go to Cherokee and find out there's a kiosk down here and come here, or vice versa, and every place in between. The Apple Trail is a new project, and I don't know if you guys are familiar with it. So the Cherokee people were adept breeders of apples, and going back 1,400 years, they found actually peach pits in archaeological digs and assumed that apples were with them. But the peach pits last a little better through time. So the Cherokee people had developed new breeds of apples, and they had started to utilize these new breeds, and then, of course, they were sent away and lost those apple trees. And Barbara came up with the idea of honoring the people and the trees by, on the Greenway, putting in a sort of orchard trail. We were going to just do an orchard at first, but we realized there's a lot more to teach people. And so we're going to put in a trail with mini orchards every so often. Each one will have a theme and maybe a different breed of apple. The various apple breeds were saved because as soon as the Cherokee were gone, I'm told that other orchardists sort of just flocked in here and confiscated the apples, I guess I'd have to say. But they kept them alive. Some of them were changed and bred into other things, but some of them are still what they were. And so think of all that we can learn from a trail of apples. We can learn, again, about healthy eating and nutrition, and children can learn that an apple a day does keep the doctor away. And we can learn about the history of the Cherokee people and the settlers as well, and the history of the town of Franklin. So that's going to be a really fun project. It is underway. We're actually also working with Clemson University to do some design on that. Their students in the landscape architecture program are helping out with that. Multicultural Alliance is a group of leaders of nonprofits that I put together and have sort of handed off to someone else. I kind of believe in my heart that when COVID is over, our cultures are going to be a lot of what is the glue in our communities. And as people become comfortable with their own cultures, and everybody has one, then they're going to be able to accept other people's cultures. And I think it's going to be really important that we reflect on who we are and who others are, and respect that in ourselves and in others. And so this alliance is sort of working to that end. The corridor map I already showed you, and then Hall Mountain, of course, is the one and only community forest put together by USDA that's owned and managed by a Native American tribe. And N'Kwasi Initiative is helping with the education program up there. So those are our primary projects right now, activities. And of course, celebrations of success are so important in anything anyone does. And so we started celebrating in advance, and you all knew about the groundbreaking. That's what I've got a couple of pictures of here. We're celebrating on our social media. Please look us up on whatever social media you follow, and like us, or share us, or whatever you do on those things. The photo in the upper left is the, it's actually a different cover, but it's the online version. If you get the hard copy of the Laurel magazine from Asheville for this month, November, there's an article in there about the corridor and information about the kiosks here in Franklin. So that's bringing some attention to the town. And then I wondered if there's any questions? And I always, Barbara's going to get tired of seeing the statue, I think. This is the dignity statue that's in South Dakota, and a man wanted to honor the Native American people and the females and the people of South Dakota. And he hired an artist and contributed a million dollars and put up this 35-foot tall statue. And you can see how small the people are dwarfed by it. And it just speaks a lot to me and I think other people. And we've actually sent an inquiry off to a major funder to see if we can put some additional art statues up that speak to our history and our dignity here in this community, starting, of course, with the one that the Women's History Trail is trying to put up. So any questions?
Questions from the board. Elaine, thank you so much for coming tonight.
I will show you, I presumed you were going to get a question about how long it's going to take to do the next phase down there. So I just wanted to see, complicated, we've got a lot of moving parts, and that's sort of the schematic for it. So you're welcome.
Thank you, ma'am.
Let's see if I can get out of here.
If you can't get, I'm sure Justin.
Yeah, exactly. Let's see where we can find a eject button. Right there.
Thank you again for coming tonight.
Thank you. And I sent, you saw it already, I sent a letter to the editor, should come out tomorrow in the Franklin Press.
I did.
Saying thank you to all you guys. We had some extra special help, and appreciate it.
All right, water line extension request. Mr. Stamey?
Yes, sir.
Welcome, sir. Come on up.
Evening, everyone. My name's Morris Stamey, and I think you have a, in your packet, a pretty picture that Mr. Moore has supplied you with, with the graphics I did. And just a quick background, I don't want to take up too much of your time, but I would like to plead for the extension. If you look at the map, here, let me get it cut this way, Stafford 41, Martian Church Road. And of course, you can see Carolina Villas, and I think the water crosses over and goes on that side. My parents at one time owned basically where the blue lines come up on Martian Church Road and dead ends up where the M is at Martian Church, a props, and lived pretty close to that area right in there. Just under two years ago, my father passed away, and that left mom and her house is rather large. It's not four stories, it's just four levels. And their help, her help was unable to keep up the property. And they had built a, where my mom lives, and we remodeled, and I live there, about where the R is in church, is the house on the property where my mother lives, and my wife and myself and he live on that there. And there's a property that you can't see, but my sister, one of my sisters, dad had given, and mother had given them some property, and they built a house and raised their family. Unfortunately, about the time that my, a week apart, her husband had a accident at home, and due to that accident, it took his life. And so my sister decided she didn't want the home because of that. Her children are grown and moved out, so she sold home, and there was only, there was, the property had, has four wells on the property at one time. There's one that supplied all the property, my parents' house at that time, the rental house, and my sister and her husband's house, and it worked fine. When mom sold the house, it was brought to our attention, it's one of those things, I guess, that you just, mom and dad had it, lived there for 30-something years, worked fine. Now that they're, mom's still alive, but her health is not the best. So I guess we're coming to grips that age is catching up. So the, in order for my sister to sell the house, we had to give, my mom had to sign, what's the word I'm looking for, it's not community, a shared well agreement for that particular thing for it to sell. And then when my mom sold, and we didn't, had nothing to do with it, but just later when she realized the house was just too much for her, the property, the 10 acres at one time, it just took way too much for her to keep up with. So it comes to our kitchen that when the house sold, actually it was bought by Matt Greiglove, who bought that, and it's, and he has a growing family, and the person that drilled the well, Mr. Holland, had drilled all the wells on there. Only one is a very viable well. He said it would supply all the houses, but now we're not talking about my parents and them renting a house, and usually it was just to... them renting a house and usually to, was just a single person or a retired couple. But now we're talking about, we may have families that use that well. So we, in order to make the sale of my mother's house go through, and it was brought our attention toward the end of the sale or when the, before it was signed, that that one well. And it would not be, looking in the future, it would not be feasible to try to supply all that property with maybe. So we come up agreement with the Breeloves that we would either drill a new well on the property that where my mother and I live, which is a small, an acre-ish, thereabouts. Of course, we're gonna run into problems of well and septic. Of course, it's got a septic tank, but if that well, you know, we have, the legality is about building another well and there's no guarantee you're drilling the sink that's whole, trying to find water. And so we have set aside, well, we use the term $15,000. So for that or a little less or a little more, we checked in through Mr. Moore about how close we were to city water. And you can see, and I talked to Mr. Breelove and the lady that had purchased my sister's former home, if they might be interested in joining in on the city water. They still, you know, have not made up their minds, but definitely because that house that I, my mom and I live in has the Breeloves, their gentleman agreement are letting us use that well that's on their property, on the Breeloves property, my mom and dad's former property. We are, so we set aside, we can either drill a well, attempt to drill a well on the property that's left where my mom and I live, which is in her name, or we could drill another well on the Breeloves property and pay for it and give them, because they've got a growing family. But I thought, hey, spend that much money knowing once we hook to the city, that water's gonna come through that line. There's no guarantee how many, how much times we would have to drill a well. And if you're familiar with the area in that particular 441, it's notorious for not hitting water the first time. You have to drill, sometimes you have to drill several times. So we're willing to pay to get it to the house if the board would approve us, if that's simple, since it's just a household. There's no plans to open a car wash or anything. It's just, it's just a household uses. And we're just like, that intention to give myself plus my mama ease of mind to spend that much money, we're gonna guarantee water because from the city as opposed to trying to drill a well.
I understand, sir.
And that's, that's it. Of course, you know, the burden cost would all be on us. And we would just appreciate your looking into this and, and, you know, as soon as possible because the Breeloves, our families go way back. So we're just, you know, not necessarily at their mercy, but we have a gentleman's agreement. We would like to get this settled as soon as possible for, for all parties. Thank you. I appreciate your time.
Didn't cut any?
Mr. Moore, if any tech, that's my, any tech, if Mr. Moore can answer those.
Right, sir. We've got him primed.
Okay, yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stamey.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Did I understand we do supply water to Carolina Village?
Yes, we do. Yeah, we currently do.
So we, all right.
Is that budget sufficient and what size of a water line we're willing to put there, thinking into the future?
So minimum water main requirements that we have to run is a two-inch line. A two-inch line on a single run without being looped will support up to 20, basically 20 home connections on that system.
And how much will that cost?
So the way this, the way the policy works for a water line extension that we have is the board would allow someone to extend that and that cost of that extension is burdened by the property owner or corporation that would like to extend outside of those limits that we currently have.
So everything's? Budget in mind, is that sufficient? Are we getting him in a weird pickle to where it's gonna cost a lot more?
So that's where me and Mr. Stamey had talked before, any out-of-pocket expenses that come out of him, I wanted to make sure that the board, if they would like to approve that, then we can get in and I'll be happy to help. He can get some more hard numbers together to see if that's something that he would like to do or not.
You suggest a, a two-inch line minimum. It used to be we would charge for the two-inch line, but if we had any reason for the future of the town to put a bigger line, then we would cover the difference between the two-inch line and the bigger line. You're not suggesting on this run, though, that, you're saying a two-inch line would probably be adequate?
Yeah, I'm looking at that to loop around, if we were to run a larger main, the, the cost involved with that I don't see would be a benefit for the town or our system.
Yes, we.
You don't see any extra burden, I mean, by adding this property, this extension on the town's water supply, do you?
No, as far as allocation amount, we were, we were good on that. And as far as everything put into our spec and what we use right now, I don't see any extra burden put on our system.
Thank you.
Okay, any further questions?
Just curious, are there a lot of extensions on this line, Georgia line?
Yep, there would be a lot because, so basically this is real close to the end. Carolina Village would be our furthest customer, but everything from the end of city limits to Carolina Village, there's lots of extensions that have been put in throughout the years on that section of water line.
Any further questions? All right, if not, I guess we'll entertain a motion to approve if.
I'd make that motion.
Okay, in a second. Any further discussion?
I have a question. What's, what's the motion? Is the motion to approve it or to start negotiating with our engineer to work out the details? What's the motion?
My motion was to approve it and I assumed that if you can't work out an agreement, it wouldn't proceed is what I would, would imagine.
We approve it as long as the funding is acceptable to them. If the funding's not acceptable, then, yeah.
So you're saying you approve, you approve it as long as it is worked out within our engineering department and meets the specifications and the customer actually is responsible for the cost?
Yes, I assumed it was the requirements and everything, there wasn't any issue other than working out cost. So my motion was to proceed with that and if there is any issue, I'm sure he'll be back to drilling a well.
Right. If we're gonna have to spend that much money, we don't know, we're willing, I mean, I would like to keep it under $100,000. We're not sure, we're probably closer to 20-ish.
Yeah.
You know, so we have no problem with that.
Okay.
And if it goes anywhere, that would not, probably not be an issue anywhere.
Okay, we have a motion in a second on the floor. Any further discussion? All in favor? Okay. Okay, Mr. Stamey? Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
The next item is a discussion on Veterans Day and Winter Wonderland events. Madam Manager.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Council. Kind of wanted to give the board some updates where we are and get some feedback from council. The first item, kind of wanna talk over is Veterans Day. And I'm actually gonna defer to Mayor Scott on this. I know he's always been a huge advocate in getting this particular event up and going. And I believe Mayor for Veterans Day has actually spoken to Mr. Shields and some of the veterans. So for this event that's scheduled, I'm gonna defer to Mayor Scott because he's got some information on what the veterans would like since we are in a COVID year.
Yeah, the, it's always been the Legion, the VFW, the VEDON veterans and the town. But this year, we've had, of course, the pandemic has interfered with everything. However, there is a Veterans Day celebration that will be on November the 11th, put on by an organization, Special Liberty Project. And Mr. Shields and myself are in communication on that. It'll be very, very scaled down, but we will have a color guard. We'll have a very, very short program and that's gonna be it. And it is gonna be at Berry Cove Road, 635 Berry Cove Road. And I'm not quite sure where that is. Does anybody know?
It's out of Mountain.
It's something Farming Retreat Center.
Sounds like Holly Springs.
Maybe it is, yeah. So anyhow, that, that right now looks like, other than maybe some of us attending, that'll be the, it kind of breaks my heart, though.
It's next year.
Next, we will have next year, yes. So Madam Manager, unless there's some questions, I would just suggest that we accept that as presented, that that will, and we will help them in any way that we, that we can. But this was apparently has been approved by all the veterans organizations about it.
So if we can get some thoughts on council, if you guys are okay with, with what's been suggested for Veterans Day, then we can take Winter Wonderland as a separate approach.
Need a motion on that?
Do we need a motion? Just a consensus, I think.
Is that the new place that they just opened?
Yeah, it is.
So that?
It is new, yeah.
Then that is appropriate for them.
And they are limiting the number of people that can come. And it's RSVP required, so it will be a small number of people able to attend it. And they are working out something with the radio station. It will be broadcast live. Madam Manager, that's all I know. That's where we are with it.
So if we can then just move forward with Winter Wonderland, so kind of had a internal committee together. I know Ms. Mashburn and Mr. Lewis has been active in helping us with this, Ms. Taylor as well, and then some town staff. What we'd like to do for Winter Wonderland this year is still do it on Saturday, November 28th. We would still like to do the tree lighting ceremony. We would just require social distancing and masks required and we would work, would maybe do a live stream feed as well. We are also maybe hoping if some of our new signage is in, we could live stream in other parking lots as well to offer that to people so not everyone's crowded down there. But this year, instead of doing the carriage rides and the train rides, there's just a lot of, a lot of close contact with those, those events. So we would scale that down and basically treat it similar to where it's just a small town, Saturday, November 28th and Saturday, December 5th. It'd still be from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. and just encourage people to shop with the merchants. One of the things we're working on is to create a very large Christmas display, something similar to what we did for our fall decor. So then that way people can come with their own leisure throughout the month of December and some of November and have some photo opportunities as well. But again, the only thing we're asking is for November 28th, we would do the tree lighting as normal, but masks and social distancing would be required. We'll live stream it and then December the 5th, it would just be pretty much the merchants. I know the Merchants Association and Ms. Taylor's done a great job of encouraging people to come downtown with different activities. But we would ask, after speaking with Ms. Taylor, if on November the 28th and December the 5th, if Main Street could be closed from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m.
Okay, so you need a vote?
It always is, right? It, it always, yes, ma'am.
It's a lot safer when it's closed.
It is, especially at night.
I mean, I, I'll make that motion to approve as you just described.
Okay, do we have a second? All right, any further discussion? Okay, I'm calling for the vote. Okay, all in favor? All right.
Thank you.
Unanimous. Okay, presentation on Ray's Chapel, Vice Mayor Barbara McRae.
Some of you have seen some of this before. This is an updated version of one I did in 2014. And I just wanna make sure that everyone is familiar with it. I'll try to go through it quickly. I think Joe needs to go somewhere.
I can think of somewhere.
Okay. Ray's Chapel, AME Zion Church, a chance, a chance to say the rare piece of our history is what I'm calling this. I'd like to talk about some of the very early history of Ray's Chapel. And I'd like to emphasize the fact that this is a black history treasure, but it is also a piece of our community's history. It's the whole, whole community's history. Thinking back to the Civil War, imagine in 1865 when the soldiers came home. And we know about PTSD now. We have all of these terms and treatments and psychiatrists and so forth. They didn't know about PTSD then, but they knew about men being haunted forever by war and what it did to them. And a gentleman came home to Franklin, battle weary. I can't get inside his head, but I tried to. And I imagine that what he was hoping was that his world would heal, our world, this world would heal. Captain William Addington, he was a former slave owner and he had also been a CSA captain. He helped, and one of the first things he did, he helped a black minister of the AME Zion Church, which was an abolitionist church before the war and a sponsor of the Underground Railroad. And he must have known that. But he helped this man establish a church in Franklin. We don't know the man's name. He may have been the only black person in the county at the time who would have been capable of pulling this off because, as you know, slaves were not allowed to learn how to read and write. The fact that this man was literate and that he was ordained as a minister is really quite amazing. Addington gave a piece of property, a small piece, that was part of his own land. And I thought about why he did that and I believe that he may have been putting the church under his own protection because everyone didn't share his views. His view was to heal, to help, to help everyone come together, to help the black people raise up, help the white people reconcile. But nobody would attack a building that was owned by a former CSA captain who was a highly respected man in the community. So perhaps the most amazing part of the story is that this little chapel, this little very humble building, was also used as a school for black children. This was in 1865. There was, the North Carolina public school system had been shut down since the war began. There were only a handful of schools, most of them private schools in Macon County, that managed to stay open. In 1870, when the state required a survey, excuse me, a study of what was open, what was available, what the schools were like, Mr. Dr. Woodfin did that study and he mentioned this one black school. And he mentioned the minister that was teaching it, but he didn't give any names. So I'm gonna find that one of these days, but right now I do not know who that was. So on a more personal note, Captain Addington not only helped get the church started, but in exchange for help in the, in the household, he took in a young black woman, a young black girl, she was just a girl, who had been born in slavery in Georgia. There's an incredible backstory there. I know a lot of it and when I have more time, I'd be happy to share it with you. I'm trying to rush through this right now. Anyway, she was boarding there in the house, helping out and going to the school. Addington became the postmaster of Franklin. And as such, he hired a young black man, whose name was Matt Ray, to carry the mail to Branson City. He also boarded Matt at his house. So it became inevitable, of course. These two young people fell in love. And in 1879, Nan Hackett and Matt, Matt Ray were married in the little chapel. And I want you to see who did this ceremony. Dr. Henry Woodfin. Dr. Henry Woodfin, perhaps, well, certainly one of the most prominent men in Macon County at the time. He performed, he was the justice of the peace. He performed his ceremony. The witnesses were three prominent young men of the, of the town, three single young men. Alf Morgan, who went on to Cherokee to found the Cherokee Scout, but at that time, he was the editor of a newspaper in Franklin. W.A. Bryson, who was a merchant, and Samuel L. Rogers, who later was the director of the Census of the United States in Washington. At the time, he was rooming with the Addingtons, and he later married the daughter of William Addington. In 1884, after nine years of this informal arrangement, Captain Addington made it legal, and he sold the land to the church for a nominal sum. Okay. So you see all the, that part of the story is really good. I mean, it shows that there was an effort after the Civil War to bring the races together to have reconciliation. A lot of white people also helped and did good things. And that was before, you know, the Night Riders and the KKK and Jim Crow laws and all of that came in. Makes you realize what could have happened and things that just worked out a little bit differently. I wanted to give you a little bit of information about the AME Zion Church. And y'all who are up here at the table, and I've given you some information, including a poster, and I have an extra copy of this if you, if you would like. The AME Church was founded in 1795 by free members, free Black members of the Methodist congregations in, in New York City. That black men could not be ordained at that time in any church in the United States, including this new church. In 1823, however, they were allowed to be ordained for the first time. During the period of abolition, the church became active in efforts to emancipate the slaves, became known as the Freedom Church. Several members earned fame for their efforts. These people included Harriet Tubman, Sojourner Truth, and Frederick Douglass. Post-Civil War, the church sent missionaries to the South to help establish churches. There already was one in Macon County. 1884, this is important to me as a woman, the church led the way in giving leadership roles to women. This was at a time when most mainstream Protestant churches, Catholic churches, whatever, did not allow women in leadership roles. Ten years later, that church ordained its first female deacon, and her name was Julia H.J. Foot. This had an impact on what happened in Macon County also, so I'm not going too far astray. In 1905, the congregation of the little church on Harrison Avenue was faced with a dilapidated building, and they had to do something. So they tore it down intending to rebuild. Okay, here, the town council at the time passed a law while the building was apart. And the law said, any building built within a certain distance of the courthouse had to be built brick. Well, brick was a very expensive building material, and this was a very poor church. So rebuilding suddenly was not an option for them. The AME Zion bishop came in and negotiated with the town officials, and there was a compromise. And the neighbors on Harrison Avenue, who I believe to have been very fair-minded, good, good men, I have no reason to think otherwise, and I'm sure you've all heard of them, Dr. S.H. Lyle, Isaac Ash, and Dr. W.H. Higgins, who was a dentist. They got together and pooled their money and gave the congregation $100. And they could, so they could use that to build a church somewhere else, if they would promise to build it somewhere else. Well, the church trustees agreed. Nan and Matt Ray provided land on Green Street where they lived, and the church moved there using the $100 to build a new structure. In 1916, the church purchased property from St. Cyprian's for a burial ground. There had not been just this little building there, but the back of the property had been used as a, as a graveyard. They dug up all the graves and moved them to St. Cyprian's Cemetery. Okay, this is the Green Street building. The original structure on Green Street became dilapidated, as it does happen to buildings sometimes. It was replaced in 1949 with the building that is there now. And as you can see, it's in pretty good shape, but it has definitely seen better days. The building is 71 years old, and I want you to remember, 50 years is the cutoff with the National Register, so this building would be eligible. A simple block building is all, all it is, very, very simple, just one-room, fairly new heating system, got a good roof. It's important, it's not in its age nor in its architectural significance, but in the deep history that it represents. And this is, I guess you could call it the cornerstone, but it's out of the corner. Basically, the history of the church in a snapshot, established 1865, rebuilt 1849. I've been having a lot of correspondence while I've been working on this project, and a young lady I've gotten to know named Olivia Dorsey, she lives in Texas now, I believe. But she's a Stewart descendant, and she's gotten very, very interested in this project. So she wrote a statement of support for me, and this is part of what she said. "Can you imagine what preserving this small, unassuming building could mean for these families? It would recognize the lived experiences of our ancestors. It would empower generations with a history that would otherwise be forgotten. And in our present times, it could do what it had once done centuries ago, cultivate meaningful bonds in a tight-knit community." That's why it matters to her. Why should it matter to us? Okay, I think there are a lot of reasons why we should care about this little building. Very few African-American structures remain in Macon County to tell the significant stories of these mountain people. Though it's humble, the building has important things to say. It can tell the stories of the old neighborhood, which was a once vibrant place, whose residents represented the varied strands of African-American experience in Macon County. And I've got more of the history of the neighborhood in your beautiful folders. There are stories of individuals like Eddie Ray, the music man who came from Franklin, left home at age 15, rose to an amazing career in the music industry, helped a lot of careers flourish. He's now in his 90s, but his grandparents were Matt and Nan Ray. He grew up nearby, worshipped here as a youth. J.D. Shepherd, the county's only black commissioner so far, was an active member of this church. And also has valuable chapters on women's history. At a time, and I mentioned this before, Nan Ray, who sold the land for the church, was a trustee by at least 1905. So I don't, I doubt if there's another church in Macon County that can say that they had a woman on the board of, there were four women on the Board of Trustees at that time. Early female ministers included Maria Hayward, Mrs. Reverend Elam, they called her, in the 50s, and Nettie Sue Ray in the 60s. This is a picture of Nan Ray. She lived to be 101. This was her when, the very end of her life. And Bob, I believe your mother-in-law, your, or your, your wife's aunts were the ones who brought her this present. It was in, I found it in the Franklin Press. The Women's History Trail plans to honor her with a plaque. It would be our next plaque, so you're getting a preview of that here. Honoring her role as a woman in the church, and also for her really fine life. That was an example to people. Okay, now briefly, the history of the proposed project. And one of the documents in your folder is a report from a lengthy meeting that we had in 2014. A group had gathered at that time to discuss what could be done. Bob, I believe you were at the meeting. Patty Abel, from the town council at the time, was at the meeting. Members represented in, other than the town, Drake Enterprises, Job, the Job Corps, the neighbors, Doc Gibson, who was the last trustee of the church, preservationists and historians, the Macon County Baptist Men's Association and others. I have no reason to think that any of these people have ceased to be interested in the project and, or ceased to be interested in helping with it, if it becomes viable. We talked about sources of funding, groups and individuals who could help. The goals of the project at that time, as we stated them, were restoration and preservation, creation of a community facility, and neighborhood revitalization, which I'm sure you're all aware that neighborhood really needs some love. Six years later, the public still brings up the project, wanting to know if it's still on. I don't get a question every day, but I bet I get one every two weeks or at least every month, or maybe more often. Is something gonna happen with that church? What's the story on that church? So it's very rewarding in a way. It makes me feel bad that nothing has happened, and a lot of it is my fault. So why did the initial effort fail? Well, chiefly, we ran into a wall that I just couldn't figure out a way to resolve. Ownership issues were unclear, seemed to be insurmountable at the time. We have since made progress in that area. I think it could be possible now. The person leading the project, that would be me, was facing two surgeries and a long period of treatments and so forth then. It just seemed impossible to continue with it. With the passage of time, I think we've gained a new sense of urgency. We and the nation have a greater sense of the importance of our black neighbors, the contributions they have made to the growth of the community, and the need to tell their stories, or let them tell their stories. This humble structure is unmatched in the richness of the stories it can tell, but time is not on our side. Despite improvements on Green Street, the neighborhood still needs uplift. I think this project, if it were done properly, would be a boost in the arm, would be really, would help uplift that whole area. We can, to me, this is the most important, we can create something beautiful, something the world will notice and cheer, something healing and uplifting. The chap, the chapel restored could be an anchor for Green Street, an symbol of revitalization. Restoration would show Franklin's commitment to historic preservation. And you all know, we've lost several buildings that many of us still mourn. The old fire department building, for example, several, a couple of years ago, came down. Restoration would honor the black residents whose lives were once entwined with the church and show that the contributions and uniqueness of all citizens are honored. The restored chapel could fill an important role as a community center and a neglected part of town and kick off further improvements. So I think what we have here is just a one-time shot, and we have a chance to do something good. And I'm hoping that the building is still there, that this could be the time to go forward with it. And I will be talking with you more about how that might transpire. But basically tonight, I just wanted to fill you in on what I've learned a little bit and make sure all of you were familiar with the, with the real history of this important little piece of property. So are there any, any questions?
Thank you, Barbara.
You're welcome.
Okay. The next item is an exciting presentation on cross-connection and backflow policy. Mr. Moore.
I'm sure this is what everyone's been looking forward to this evening, so I'll keep it short and sweet for y'all. This policy's one that the town has had on the books for years. And for some of the new members, maybe just to kind of refresh you, 'cause what has happened is the state has came in with some new mandates on all public water systems, of reporting requirements for businesses and industrial users of having a backflow device annually checked and keeping up with those devices checked every year. So our policy is sound. What we have, we use this from that new mandate. Like I said, it's nothing that has came from us or the town. We just have to come into compliance with it by the end of the year. And we've been working on different ways to help people, 'cause a lot of people's probably never heard of this, 'cause you were supposed to keep up with these things yourself, and then we would ask for reports if need be. Now we will be keeping those reports in-house, so when our inspectors come by, if they ask for your cross-connection report for a certain business, we have that on file, and we'll start reaching out to these businesses outside to provide and get their systems up to date. I mean, real quick, easy, I mean, a couple of things of, the people that are required to have these devices are all industrial customers, commercial customers, bulk water customers, and schools, medical buildings. So any large user and anyone with fire lines will have one of these, hopefully installed already, and they would just need to get that annually tested. That is, a third-party tester comes in and tests that, gives a report to the business and sends a report to us for our records.
So this is one of those things where we actually can vote, but we really don't have a choice?
I just want.
Right? That's the state I might use, basically? Does that work?
I wonder if anybody in the outside comes up and asks, well, you know, why is these letters coming from the town of Franklin? So everybody had a general idea of, you know, what this is about. You know, like I said, it's a mandate from the state that we have to comply with.
This is gonna go over like a lead balloon with most business owners when they get this. So when they get this letter, is it possible we can send additional information with the letter, like a recommendation of qualified plumbers or people who are experienced in doing this? List, contact phone numbers so that they don't get the letter and say, well, what am I supposed to do?
Yeah, so that's where we're working with people. I know this is gonna be a little different, where most people's probably never even heard of this, or what they need to do. But yeah, we're putting together a list of either devices, if you don't have one, where we can help you out and pick one out, list of testers that they can get ahold of that will come to our area, and what we can do to help facilitate getting everyone back into compliance.
I would, we just, we should soften the blow as much as possible. I mean, if I got the letter to my business, I would immediately not be happy. With the town, even though it's not our fault, it's a state thing.
Well, that's where your letter says per state guidelines.
I agree, but again, if the town could just do a solid and, and make it a little bit easier by a list that, while you're sitting at your desk, open the letter, you can call somebody, find out how much it is, maybe get it arranged.
Are some, some businesses already doing this now?
So yeah, we do get several from different businesses around, so everything in the past several years, at least in my timeframe, has had all their devices put in per our construction specs. We know where they are. But yeah, there are lots of the large businesses that are already sending us this information.
I think I remember somewhere here, this, this has been in the works for quite a while, and most of the municipalities that operate water systems and sewer systems and so forth have already been complying with this. We're just a little bit slow catching up.
Yeah, that's where this ordinance has been on the books for several years, where it really put the burden just on them to keep their records. When this mandate changed, it puts the burden more on us to make sure that those business owners are doing what they're supposed to do.
Okay, folks, any other questions?
Mr. Mayor, since this is an amendment to an existing ordinance, I think the appropriate motion would be to adopt the amended ordinance as presented. If anybody's got any other questions.
Okay, somebody want to make a motion and state what that motion is?
I'll make a motion that we adopt amended ordinance as presented.
I will second that.
All right, any further discussion? All in favor? Okay, thank you, Mr. Moore. All right, Legal, the Franklin Fire Department Substation. Madam Manager, Mr. Henning.
Yes, Vice Mayor and Council. Just kind of, I'll probably turn it over to Legal, if he doesn't mind, to kind of give the board an update of where we are with the fire substation. We also have the architect, Mr. Tom Ritter. He's been great to work with us. He's present as well. So with that, I'm just gonna turn it over to Mr. Henning to kind of guide the board of where we've been, where we are, and where we might go with this.
Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers, since the beginning of summer, maybe even before that, I mean, you all recall that we obtained a piece of property out on 441 through an exchange with Mr. Drake. It's the finished level property up there next to the, the Drake Software Building. Did that through an exchange, and I think we're gonna put it to some very excellent use eventually. We have, since the beginning of summer, been working through a design process, and I have to reluctantly tip my hat, though. Mr. Ritter's done an excellent job with helping. to reluctantly tip my hat to Mr. Ritter's done an excellent job with helping the fire department and your town staff work through all of a very lengthy process of feeling out its options. About a month ago, we ran a formal bid process. You're required under North Carolina law, if a construction project's going to cost more than $500,000, and we didn't know what the bids would look like. We had some estimates to run a formal bid process. Much safer if you don't know to go ahead and make it formal, which we did. And I'll save you the gory details, but the bids came in over the amount that you had budgeted. They were over $500,000. Since then, Mr. Ritter and I told him that you've got Legal covered to do this, negotiated with the apparent low bidder on that to a project of approximately $400,000, which is what we're going to bring you a contract to enter into to do. But administration's also going to recommend that you finance this through a mortgage-type financing, where you're going to grant a security interest in that property and construct it through it. To do that, the first step for the council now is to announce a public hearing, and I believe our intent is to continue this meeting until Tuesday, November 17th at 5:30, at which time we will go ahead and advertise that you'll have a hearing on the granting of a security interest there. We'll have a proposed bank for you, we'll have a proposed contract at that point. And if we can do all that by that date, we can meet a local government commission deadline for their December meeting and get the project underway. So that is kind of a rough sketch of sort of my domain in the whole project. I don't know if some of you want to have Tom talk about projects.
Mr. Ritter, would you like to talk about the project a bit? And then I'll be glad to talk about financing and where we came up with that financial figure.
Well, what we looked at is we did come in several hundred, or a couple hundred thousand dollars higher than we anticipated. This is really not the time to construct, because everything has gone through the roof in terms of construction costs and material costs and things like that. What we've done is we, first we went up to bid and we got, we had to delay. We only had two respondents for our initial bid process. So we were not able to open the initial bids on October 2. We had to re-advertise. We got, the next time around, we got the same two bidders and literally the same two bids that were not open the first time, we got the second time. I spoke to both of those bidding general contractors, and both of them suggested we do the same thing, negotiate with the apparent low bidder and see if we come up, come to terms with a construction budget that is less than what we had originally. Now, what we're proposing to do is, I know the big, the big purpose of this facility is to get some trucks out in that area town. And we're getting some pressure, we need to do that, we understand all that. There is a lot of desire to get a new crew room and updated services out there as well. Well, what we're proposing to do is postpone those improvements inside of that portion of the building. All and everything that we had with the truck bay goes in now, because that's what we need to have, the exhaust systems, the heating and cooling and all that. There has to be a bathroom, so we have to have that part of it in there. But essentially, all of the rest of the pieces that aren't a requirement of that truck bay portion would get deferred. And if we look at deferring it for three, four years, when the time comes when we need to get that facility up and going out there, hopefully there'll be more funding or there'll be something. And that is our avenue now to try and bring this thing back into control. We have not done anything in this facility that is anything but bare bones. We've asked the contractors, what have we done? And the building's issues have come in. I will tell you, I received a letter from Kirby Buildings today that they're expecting a 5% increase as of November 16. We talked about November 17 date, whether that happens, how we can do it. We know where this is going. We know who is around us in terms of other facilities that are out there. I can't see not building the entire shell now and having it done on the outside and then coming back in with everything that we would like to have had now. We will be able to have somewhere down the road by doing something additive to it, as opposed to tearing out anything that we've done now. We'd just be, we'd be putting in the secondary conditioning unit for the crew room at that time. We don't need to have that now. We do need to have heating and cooling for the bathroom that we have now. So we put in the first unit, we put in the trunk lines. We don't stub out of those until we need to later on, but it's really taking the, getting down to the bare minimum that we'd have to have to be able to get this thing to operate now. I've worked with Don Hensley. He is very comfortable that we can get below that $400,000 number. This is what we were trying to target. And if we can do that, I think this, we've got a plan as to how that can go around. The architectural drawings have been done as we speak. The structural drawings technically don't change, because we're trying to build in the entire structure as well as the concrete apron that the trucks need to get in and out of and all that type of thing. We've got mechanical plating plumbing is in the process of getting done. I should have those by the end of, hopefully by the end of this week, that will show him exactly what we're trying to do when we can get a more finite number from Western builders.
So what you're saying, Tom, is the square footage would be there, but we just wouldn't be developing it right now?
Correct, correct.
In other words, you wouldn't be, the overall structure is the same, it's just sort of what's going on?
Everything from the outside would be done, so Mr. Drake sees a finished building today, all right? And anybody that's up in that area. About 60% of it is truck-based, three-truck-based. They would be exactly the way that we would want them now or five years from now, whatever the case is.
And the floor space is there for these crew rooms or whatever, it was just not, would not be developed?
That is correct. It would be an open shell, is what would be in those areas.
How big is the structure?
Total of 5,000 feet.
And we're talking, the bare bones portion is what we're hoping to get for 400 grand? Or that's including the stuff later on?
No, the bare bone portion is what we're trying to, what we tried to get originally came in closer to 5 and 1/2, 570.
And it's a metal building, right?
It's a metal building.
Mr. Collins?
Three is bigger than what I ever thought we were thinking about building out there. I mean, I never heard three trucks. I've heard one or maybe two. That's me. I mean, it's larger and then crew space and stuff. I thought, I thought this was going to be a bare bones, get one unit out there. Now, I know that there's economies of scale and it may make sense for some level of expansion, but, and I understand that this three is way back down from what a whole lot of people were wanting. Or maybe it's just more of the trappings on the cake now rather than later, but it looks like it's a whole lot bigger project than what was pitched to, at least by ears when we started this.
And if I may, Council Mayor, I agree 100%. I agree with Mr. Collins. Our main reason for the substation was to fill our contractual obligation to Macon County. During the, I believe there was a subcommittee that met, we have scaled it down to where, I mean, in reality, I, do you, why did you, you know, I'm asking, where did the three bays come from? Our legal obligation to Macon County is at least to have one truck out there. And I know the town council was gracious enough to move forward with securing that truck about two years ago, so I guess that is my question.
Prior to me getting involved, there was a committee that the fire department has put together, and I know they went and looked at Mountain Valley, they looked at High Wassy Dam, there's a couple of different, couple of different smaller area local fire stations. And I know that they looked at the size of those spaces, a couple of them I've done before, West Macon Fire was one of them, had a different set of criteria involved in it. But that was the type of building, and I think what we came up with was that 5,000 feet, which based on three bays and potential crew area out there, was what we were anticipating was going to come into that budget area. I don't know where the quantity of bays came in. I don't know where the county requirements for having trucks in that area. I don't know anything about that. I do know that when we came around to it, it appeared that we were trying to model after one of those, there's one in Marble, North Carolina, that we've done one recently out there. Those were done under different parameters. They weren't competitively bid. They were local contractors and they were, you know, so we do run into some of those things, just with the quantity of dollars and the bonding. Once you require a big performance bond, that takes most of the general contractors in this area out of the picture that can't bond it, can't build it.
So, I've seen, remember, and I don't, I'll tell you if I'm wrong, you may as know, I just, somewhere in the high 3000s, is what, was that not what we were originally talking about? Somewhere, I mean, close to 400, like 360, 370 was the number I remember.
So you're absolutely right. And that's where we've been, administration's been adamant from the beginning, even with the fire subcommission. Where we're coming up with that figure is the town of Franklin already has built in the fire department's budget from where we had some trucks that had to be refinanced. There's an annual debt service payment of $74,000 that's already been built in, okay? We paid those trucks off at June 2020. However, moving forward, we chose to keep that debt service in there, knowing anticipation of having to build the substation. So that way, we're not asking the residents for a fire tax increase and we're not asking Macon County. We have that debt to be able to utilize it. Where we then come up with the 375, $400,000 was trying to look at a five-year capture mark of where we could be at. But that is what we have to work with in our existing budget, is those numbers without one above and beyond, because at some point, I've, I know Ms. Mashburn and I expressed this to the committee as well, is there's going to be a time where we've got to look at their main station. At some point, it may be five, three, five, 10 years down the road, but we need to look at that. So that's why we've looked at trying to stay around what we actually have budgeted and can afford for the substation.
Would you finance this with an installment purchase contract? Is that what you're looking at? And what would be the terms? How many years would that be?
Well, actually, after talking with the subcommittee and the main thing, really after talking to LGC, Ms. Bishop, Mr. Henning and I had a conference call last week with them, and it would be financing for probably 10 years, because they said a five-year would not be very lucrative option for some of the banks. So the LGC actually recommended to us to finance for 10 years with an option to pay off sooner. Oh, yes, sir.
Ms. Mashburn had a question.
Well, it really wasn't a question. It was just kind of back to a little of what Joe said and Mike said. Yes, that was always the high 300s that I was sitting on a meeting at the fire station when they had their plans or what they, I think they had your rendering at that time. And then also, but we had a meeting where they came back, that that was kind of what they thought they could build it for. Of course, the cost went up, so the price went up. And then, once it came in at that, we met back later that it is, with a lot of discussion, it's much more feasible to do what he said now, to get the building, but also the fact that when they do, when they have a lot of improvements that need to be done on the main station, that if they can get some things done, they've got a, they'll have a good place to work out of when that comes down the road, plus not putting all the money in on that building. So they're still staying in what we originally had allotted the budget for. And that was, so I know we started out not like that, but they did come back later with the high 300 that we had more or less said was okay.
And, you know, it could very well be, you know more about, you might be the same size heating and air unit for a two-bay or a three-bay. There's different, I understand how those numbers work. But if it's just a matter of a nod and a wink, that we're going to go 400 to 425, whatever, but that, whatever it is, it uses a little more than you think. With a nod and a wink, then in a few years' time, we're going to build that crew room and all that other stuff. I don't want us to go down that road. I'm not too uncomfortable building a nice-sized shell for three trucks if we can get that in about our budget, but not with the understanding that we're just going to defer and turning it into something that may be, will be up to a future board, obviously, at that time.
I was under the impression, a couple of years ago, when we swapped out a valuable piece of downtown real estate for some land, to build this, we were just looking for a garage just to qualify for the ISO rating. I was not aware we were going to be getting rid of a $100,000 piece of property and then spending $400,000 to $600,000. I'm not saying we needed it or we don't need it. I'm just, I'm in foreign territory with that kind of budget for, what I think is the type of metal garage that we see going down the road in places. I just wasn't aware that metal buildings are that expensive now.
Well, they came back to us, though, with, they stood here and presented...
I must have missed that meeting.
And we all heard it. I heard it. I've heard it twice, because I heard it in the firehouse. But they presented that. So I guess my thing is, if we don't go ahead with it, I think we backtracked on what we said at a prior meeting. That's if, if you're still staying in the range, they gave us a...
Bear in mind, we're spending money and resources to expand water out there because of the very reason that part of town, we expect that to be more demand of growth.
I'm not arguing for or against, I just, I was under the impression that we were putting a garage for an ISO rating. I just, I missed the memo on this thing being this large facility and this nice of a facility. We're going to need that big of a facility one day. It's just a lot to absorb right now.
Any further discussion?
Tom, I think you mentioned that one of the reasons that it was so high is because building material costs has really gone up a lot. I've been checking here lately on some building materials, it's gone up to, in some cases, three times what it was a year ago. That has the biggest effect on the cost on this project, I think. Do you think there's a possibility that the building material prices could come back down?
I don't know that it could in the timeframe that we're looking to have some of this thing constructed. They're talking about a 5% increase, they'll hold the numbers for anything ordered by November 16. 5% is still $5,000, roughly. So I think it's...
As the board made a commitment...
That's 5% of just a metal building.
Has the board made a commitment as to when you expect to have this facility open in running?
Couple of years ago, I think was the deadline.
Two years ago?
Something like that, yeah.
We, the county's waiting on us now. I mean, we reported to the county that we would fulfill the obligation, so, I mean, they're probably ready for it.
But this debt service will be paid back from where, Madam?
Out of the fire department's existing general budget.
It wouldn't be, it wouldn't be a tax increase, a general tax increase.
Absolutely not.
It would be out of the fire department revenue.
Out of the current existing fire department revenue, and that is where we come up with those financial figures, and that is why we rejected the first bids, because they do not suit the residents of Franklin for that amount of money. Now, this, this right here is built in to where you can sustain that without having to plead existing fund balance or put a more, place a more stringent burden on your current taxpayers.
So it doesn't require an increase in the tax rate?
Not at all. Nope, that's why we're, I'm adamant that you stick to these numbers.
All right. No further questions. John, you want to come up with what the motion is, or would some, one of the board members like to make the motion and state what the motion is?
Are we not going to be discussing this at a future meeting?
Yes, sir. So what we're asking that the council will do, and I mean, you will need a motion when you, we can handle it all in one motion at the end of the meeting. If you entertain one now, it would be to declare a public hearing for Tuesday, November 17th at 5:30 PM as a part of your continuation meeting. And that's all we really need you to do.
I'll make that motion.
That's what the motion is then, yeah. Okay, I have a second. Any further discussion? Yes, ma'am.
Okay. You got the, my discussion, the public hearing. Okay, we have a public hearing. We have no one appear. What's the board's?
You'll be looking to approve a bank bid, review a contract, and all of that subject to final approval by the LGC, which if you can do it on the 17th, gives us enough time to submit it to LGC for approval of their December 1st board.
Which we won't know what the terms are until they correct, as far as the rate and whatnot.
Correct. You can't get it approved by LGC unless you have the public hearing. That's where it has to start. Without that, nothing makes any sense.
So what we're voting on is to have a public hearing?
What we need.
Okay.
I guess I'm saying the board's will before you to go there. I mean, am I wrong? I mean, were we voting?
I think, I think we probably can, correct me if I'm wrong, John, but I think after the public hearing, you get any input, if the board wants to change directions or make different changes than what they're expected to do, you can... you get any input, if the board wants to change directions or make different changes than what they're expected to do, you can. But I think after the public hearing is over, then the board, if it desires to do so, can go ahead and act on those items that are required to be presented to the LGC as far as the things that were mentioned on the manager.
So you can't get to a final yes, let's do this project until you have reviewed all these things, and that's what happens.
And I understand that, that wasn't really, I'm saying, the will of the board even wanting to pursue if they weren't thinking, that wasn't what we had already, I, I thought we had already went. And I understand what you're saying, but I'm getting the things that people are thinking, well, that wasn't what I thought. And I thought we did that, so if all this comes in, is everybody going to be okay to proceed with it? It's where I'm kind of trying to get a feeling.
I would just say, if anybody, if any council members got reservations still, there's, there's no reason not to have a public hearing and think about it for two more weeks, see what the bid, you know, numbers come back from the banks, you know.
I mean, that's what I was thinking, if you, if you're, you kind of, kind of know you're wanting to continue with it if you're going.
We don't, we don't know if we're going there yet, though. I mean, you know, don't stake us out tonight to say it's just formality to have a public hearing on the seventeenth and then raise your hands. I mean, I'm, like David, I missed the memo too. Or is it just him and I, or was there, somewhere a hybrid move up the ladder discussed around all of us? Was it maybe just you because of...
He stood, Matt Breelov stood up here, did a presentation, and said...
Well, we haven't, we haven't even seen any plans. The board hasn't seen any plans.
He had plans that night, didn't he?
Yeah.
He had plans.
And we talked about three or four hundred thousand dollars for the building?
Yes, we talked about that.
Three seventy-five was the, like I said, if I recall, was that...
I heard three seventy-five, I heard three seventy-five, and if, and if we can get that...
Well, we're not even going to know until the bank gets, the bank may just come back some ridiculous offer. I doubt they will, but we don't know that. So, I mean, there's really no reason not to at least see what's on the table.
So we have the public hearing on the seventeenth, and we take it from there. I mean, is there anything else we can do as board?
That is what the motion is, is to hold the public hearing.
Correct.
I would second that motion.
That starts the clock, without that, you don't have anything.
I think we've got a motion on the floor, we're in discussion, we're in discussion right now.
I don't think we had a second, though.
Yeah, I'll, I'll...
Yeah, we had a second, yeah, Mike, Mike seconded it. So we're in discussion now. Now, does anybody else got anything they want to discuss about this issue?
The only other thing I said, are we going to put a notice in the paper, how are we going to advertise the public hearing?
It'll, it'll be in the paper.
It'll be in the paper, yeah, we've got time, media's here.
Be on our website, too, probably.
Yes, absolutely, yeah.
Okay, any further discussion?
Yeah, I got one, one quick question. You said that you were, wanted to keep, sorry, Madam Manager, you said you wanted to keep us within the budget, that's the four hundred thousand dollar budget that we're talking about now.
That's what you can financially afford without burdening your current residents with a tax increase.
Okay, and that's going forward with a structure that's a shell and kicking the can down the road on finishing the inside?
Yeah, and that could be fifteen or twenty years when the next board wanted to do that. I think the main thing we owe Macon County and the residents that we serve out of this district is to fulfill our obligation with this substation. And I do think it's a huge step up from where we were two years ago, when we were presented basically a garage to go in, literally a, a barn garage. And, you know, time will tell, I mean, is there a need right now for two substations? Do you have career staff for that? No. Can you financially afford that now? No. Twenty years from now? Maybe, I, I don't know. But that's where, for management, have been very adamant that we have got to stay below that number without burdening the residents that each of you represent.
And the reason, I'm the liaison for the fire department. I've met with them, they understand exactly what Mr. Reddard has presented. They're happy with that, that they're cut back from what they wanted. And so, I'm advocating for them, because that's, we had a, a, a meeting where we tried to get all on one term, good terms about everything, that we get it under what they presented. I did go to the firehouse one time and saw the plans, but I also remember it from here. So, the reason I'm kind of pushing it is to, advocating for them is, that's what I always understood they presented, and if we got underneath that, we were basically honoring what we had told them before. That's all I was kind of trying to get at, that I felt if we backed up on them now, we weren't fulfilling what they presented to us, and...
And that'll be our decision on Saturday.
Yeah, and that's where I was going on that, so.
Okay, any further discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion? There was no opposition. Okay, as I said at the beginning of the meeting, go move up the announcements. The town offices will be closed Wednesday, November the eleventh, for Veterans Day. Town hall offices will be closed November the twenty-sixth and Friday, November the twenty-seventh, for Thanksgiving. And since we're going to be going into a closed session, has anybody around the board got anything they want to say real quick in open session before we go? Yes, ma'am?
Shout out to our sanitation workers. I've never thought I would lose someplace where if I forget to put my garbage out, they would call me and ask me if I had anything, and wait by the curb until I get it out there. They, they're just really amazing.
Yeah. Any further? Yes, ma'am?
Ms. Mayor, we have two things we just needed to bring to the board's attention. Mr. Setzer, would you like to make your announcement?
I'd like to inform the board, I think it was last month, maybe the month before last one, the board decided wanted to have Wi-Fi available in the parking lot for school kids, where they can come, essentially have somewhere to submit their homework or do something. Since then, we have bought the equipment, got the wiring ran from our server room, and there is now a receiver on the side of the building here that is projecting free Wi-Fi in our parking lot here at town hall. It's, our parking lot's pretty much the whole place, it gets because of the way the building's shaped, it's got that one side, and it's completely free and open to the community.
Are you going to tell us the password?
There is no password.
Oh!
It's just Franklin and C is the name of the, Franklin and C is the name of it.
Okay.
Click on it, and you've got free Wi-Fi. So it's, we'll make it available with, so the school kids can get it. It is available in this room as well, so there's, it's for kids, it's for the general public, anybody. You can come pretty much anywhere in this lower parking lot to get it. But if you get, pass, like a ninety degrees pass, the side of the building, you won't, you won't be able to read it because of the way the projection is of the Wi-Fi.
If it's better than what I've got at home, I'm going to come park in your parking lot.
It's pretty good, we, yeah, it was, it's picking pretty good, the parking lot.
Okay.
We want to make it available.
Thank you, Justin, appreciate you doing that, following through on that. Madam Manager, do you have another one?
Yes, Ms. Mayor and counsel, just one thing, kind of wanted to bring to the board's attention. Chief Harrell has been working, we talked about this a little bit in ordinance review today, and just wanted to bring the board. Chief Harrell's been working with Mr. Drake on the possibility of maybe accessing or being a partner to the camera that he's currently got on Main Street. One of the main reasons would be, since, you know, we put the really nice file display up, we're looking to do something very similar, if not bigger, for Christmas. And it would just be a way for us to have surveillance up there, monitor in case someone did, you know, damage any of the property we have. We've explored other avenues, we're trying to partner with other businesses, I don't know that that would go through. And we also did try and purchase a game camera, but we're having an issue with Wi-Fi up there. So Chief Harrell approached Mr. Drake, and I believe Mr. Drake's willing to work with us as long as we continue to work with legal counsel on any legal obligations with having access to that. So, John, anything else we needed to do?
I think you summed it up well, just to make the board aware, if there's, if there are any legal obligations, I don't think it's going to be anything that will take council action to do anything with, but we'll continue to partner with them.
Okay, all right. I'd like to, we're going to call for a motion to go into closed session, but because of all the voting stuff and all, we cannot go back into the back room there, so I'm going to ask that we clear the room. I, we don't expect any vote whatsoever when we come out of a closed session. So if y'all would, just let us have the room, and that, that will be it for tonight, and any further? Do we need a, we'll get a motion to go in closed session then, with those stipulations. Uh, somebody want to make the motion?
I guess I will.
All right, second?
I'll second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor? Okay, we're going to closed session, and...
I don't think you're crazy, I think you're right, I think Matt did get up there and present it, but I, if I'm not mistaken, I think it was like a three seventy-five was the drink.